Our meeting is called order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Gilstrap?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Mayor Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. Oh God, our Lord, as we gather for this meeting, may your wisdom and counsel guide us as we seek to act in a way that will benefit all the citizens of this great city. Help us to think carefully before we speak, to act with courage and conviction for the good of all, and to deal charitably with one another. Let our accomplishments be built upon the firm foundation of wisdom, charity, and justice. And may our work bring credit and benefit to those we seek to serve and to your great honor and glory. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome to our chambers Danville School Superintendent, Dr. Stan Jones is here. Also would like to welcome Ms. Lynette Lawson from the Chamber of Commerce along with the Leadership Southside class. Under communication, those who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any agenda item, you will be heard when that item is considered. And I remind all of us on the council's new rule as of January this year, those who wish to speak as individuals will have five uninterrupted minutes. And if you're speaking for a group, please identify your group and you will have ten uninterrupted minutes. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Gus Steyer and I am a real estate developer here in the city of Danville. More specifically, I'm the developer of a project called Oak Park, which is located 4180 Riverside Drive. It's a thirty-two unit patio home development. When I first started working on Oak Park, the city had in place what they called a reimbursable agreement program in which the city would, in essence, subsidize the cost of infrastructure by making payments towards streets, sewers, water lines, things like that. So I intended, when I started my project, to take advantage of the reimbursable agreement. At the time, there were several other competing projects that were in the works, and so I was told to bring a check for $500 to the city of Danville, and that would save my line in place, basically. That when I was ready to enter into the reimbursable agreement, that it would then have a place at the table. Unfortunately, the project took a lot longer than I was anticipating, and so you folks decided back in 2008 to end the reimbursable agreement program. And so I was instructed to come down and pick up my check, which I did. You know, there are a lot of costs associated with developing a project like this. One of them that I found particularly disturbing was that there was no, despite the fact this project is basically in the heart of Danville, there was no public water or no public sewer to this site. And the city was not willing to run those utilities at their cost. I was forced to spend $55,000 to run public sewer down a public right-of-way. And I was required to spend $22,000 running public water line down a public right-of-way. This is not, within the project itself, this is right down Riverside Drive, that I did that at my cost. And the city was not willing to enter any type of reimbursable agreement on that because they said they had ended the program. So anyway, so here we are today, and I noticed that on your agenda for your work session meeting this evening, that you are going to at least discuss the possibility of reinstating some form of reimbursable agreement program. And so you are provided with an information packet. And in your information package, you have a map. And this map shows all the projects in the city of Danville that had qualified for reimbursable agreements. And they date all the way back to October 7th of 1987. Anyway, and so I was looking over this map, and I noticed at the end, at the bottom of the map, there's a listing for Danville Family Homes LP, which I assume stands for limited partnership. They received a reimbursement of $194,918.27, and it states that the date of the agreement was 9 to 2009. Now that is ten months after this council voted to end the reimbursable agreement program. And so my question to you is how did this happen? Why was I told to come by and pick up my check? I was next in line. I was the next guy, I was waiting in the wings when you all decided to do away with this program. And now I find out that ten months later, this council apparently entered into an agreement with Danville Family Homes LP out of Westerville Heights, Ohio, entered into a reimbursable agreement with them. And so my question to you, you were on council at both the time the reimbursable agreement was, you decided to end it, and also when this agreement was entered into, how did that happen?
I will ask Mr. Larkin to get a response to you, sir. Not tonight.
Okay. Will you also ask him to explore the possibility? Or what are the, what would need to happen for me to be reimbursed my costs associated with running public utilities down a public right-of-way?
That will be addressed in my request to him.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And by the way, five minutes exactly. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Tommy Goddard, Danville, Virginia. I'm just here today to point out a problem that we have in Danville right now, is the shootings. And the news, I'm pretty sure most people in Danville do not realize that they've been six shootings in Danville in the last two months. Some of them have been put out in the news, some have not. I know the Danville Police Department on the city website has a place where they put some of the news that's going on in the police department. Mainly, all they have is they have one shooting from two months ago, nothing else about any of the other shootings. They have a lot of robberies, but, and we also know that we've had a lot of robberies with guns lately. And I just want to address that I think somewhere, somehow, the city needs to step up and let the public know about the shootings here in Danville. Because like I said, I know of six. I have them here, if I can hand them to somebody to give to everybody, but those are just the ones that I know that I can find proof of. And I have a feeling there might be a few more that I didn't even find out about.
Thank you. I'd like to leave him with the clerk. We'd appreciate that. Mrs. DiMasi. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Ah, yes, sir.
Glenn Scars, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, welcome.
Counselor. Thank God I was born a Southerner. I do believe at this point in my life that the South is the only region of this country left that still has any common sense, any dignity and any honor. Something happened just last week in South Carolina. It's been spoken of as a act of God. I got to thinking about that. God has a way of chastising his own before he chastise others. I think a lot of mistakes have been made in the last several years. One of them concerns Danville and its ideas towards the Confederate museum. Not speaking of a flag, speaking of the museum. Danville seems to be under the impression it's a building that belongs to them. They can do what they want to with it. Doesn't have a great deal of meaning outside of the city limits of this town. I don't agree with that. I believe that building never should have been given to Danville to begin with. It should have been under the U.S. Park Service. It is a national memorial. It should have been treated as such. I spoke with many people who have come by that museum. Not many come in because the charge to get in is really too high. I spoke with a family of five, said they'd love to go in, but they couldn't afford it. I spoke with a doctor from Brazil who asked the question, "What's the matter with you Americans? In Brazil, we think you've all gone crazy." A lot of Southerners went to Brazil after the war. They have a pretty good understanding down there of the Southern mentality. If Danville could ever see its way clear to look at that piece of property as a national memorial that's been given to you as a trust, not a play toy, not an art museum, not a place to gather and hold functions. It's not unlike Aplomatics, it's not unlike Gettysburg. To a lot of people, especially Southerners, they hold that piece of property rather dearly. I think Danville has been wayward for a long time in the way that it's looked at that piece of property. It doesn't belong to you. It belongs to the people of the South. And the ones that I talk to look at it quite a bit differently than what the people here locally do. You would get a tremendous amount of tourist building, traffic here, if you treated that building the way it should be treated, as a historical trust, and presented it in a manner that's, put it in a much better light than what it has been. So much for the museum. Onto other things for just a minute. Police Department, for example. Danville has spent so much money. And looking at the newspaper, the amount of money that's, well, $4 million is going to be added to your debt now for raises. But the most interesting thing I saw was how many duplicates you have. You've got basically two city managers. You've got three attorneys. And heaven knows, police chiefs and fire departments and all the higher-ups that are underneath there. It's a great deal of money.
Respectfully, sir, getting close?
Do what?
Respectfully, are you getting close to finishing?
Yes, I'm getting close to the end. Be careful, Danville, you're running out of money. And you're running out of your ability to raise any more money unless you just want to bar yourself into the poorhouse. But as far as the police department, this isn't Mayberry. Barney five police departments won't work. We need people who can protect the citizens. The only thing we want is a quiet, safe, effective place to live that isn't getting as full of potholes as Danville is getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Thank you. Is a motion approved, our minutes are September 1, 2015. Mr. Campbell, there's a second. Mr. Vogler. Discussion of the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner? Reverend Campbell? Ms. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Departmental amendment, items B through G, have been discussed by City Council and introduced for first reading and will be further considered by City Council in public hearing. After public hearing has been closed, there'll be no separate discussion on these items, and they will be enacted by one motion. The discussion is desired by a council member or citizen. The item will be removed from consent process and considered separately. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Closed the public hearing. Counselor, your pleasure. Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adopting ordinance from B to G.
Is there a second? Anyone want to pull any item? Second, Mr. Vogler. Want to pull an item? Madam Clerk?
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Appartments, following counsel board and commission. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through permission, I'll read these as a group, all these together. I'd like to make a motion for a resolution appointing James Edwards as a member of the Danville Redevelopment Housing Authority. A resolution appointing Vanessa Kane as a member of the Danville Utility Commission to fill an unexpired term. A resolution reappointing Sherry Chaney as a member of the River District Design Commission. And a resolution reappointing RJ Lack as a member of the River District Design Commission.
Is there a second? Mr. Jones? Discussion on the motion? Mr. Jones?
I must admit, I'd just like counsel to know that there's a young man here, James Edwards, is here. If he, if it's okay to ask him to stand. Just want to say a little bit about the young man. This young man is a musician in our city. He came before our commissioners, and he started working with young people in the community, the housing authorities, from Cardinal Village to Cedar Terrace, and he formed a choir in that community. And on behalf of the commissioners for the housing authority, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank counsel for this nomination. This young man is doing a lot in the housing authority already. Just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And he's also an amazing musician as well. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye. A resolution adopting an ordinance to appropriate funds related to the Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation ordinance for projects to be or being undertaken to approve the Danville Community Finance with Community Development Block Grant, home investment partnership funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, an estimated program income for a total appropriation of $1,301,020 for first reading.
Is there a second? Mr. Gilstrap. Discussion on the motion. First reading. A resolution adopting a budget appropriation ordinance to amend various legal fees. Counselor, your pleasure. And Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation ordinance providing a transfer from the general fund balancing amount of $350,000 to cover anticipated costs related to various legal matters and appropriating the same for first reading.
Is there a second? Mr. Shanks? Discussion on the motion. First reading. A resolution of a purchase power agreement with school failed dam generation. Mr. Shanks?
Yes, Mayor, I move for adoption of a resolution approving and authorizing the city to enter into a purchase power agreement with STS Hydro Power LTD.
Is there a second, Mr. Buckner? Discussion on the motion. Mr. Shanks?
Mayor, this is, this is, turns out to be, it seems to be a quiet item on our agenda, but it's a very important item. And first of all, I'd like to go back a few years ago when Clark Whitfield, our city attorney, brought the opportunity to City Council to purchase the dam for fear of what may happen to the water intake with the impoundment behind the dam. And that was the primary purpose for the city of buying the dam. As it turns out, we've been, had the opportunity for a huge windfall, and that is this agreement here tonight. While the power plant there, the hydro plant there on the Dan River does not generate much electricity, it certainly is going to have an impact on minimizing or making less the congestion charges that we've experienced the last three or four years that we never experienced before. And I think Mr. Whitfield, and I think counsel also deserves a congratulations on a very good decision. It's going to turn out real well for Danville. Thank you, Clark. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
A resolution approving a resolution to provide moral obligation from the city to Virginia Bank and Trust. Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a moral obligation agreement bound between the city of Danville, Virginia, and Virginia Bank and Trust Company.
Second, Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Communication, Mr. Larkin?
I have nothing this evening, sir.
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Nothing, ma'am.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, several of the councilmen went to the VML, Virginia Municipal League. I was very excited this time because in past years, going to the VML, it seemed like Danville was always behind the eight ball. This time, in going to many workshops, it was offered information. I'm proud to say to the city of Danville that we are in front of the eight ball. Some of the workshop teachers, I think most of the council individuals there, we could have almost taught the class. And I was just so proud with my heart to see how Danville has moved forward, and a lot of the councilmen across the state, they're watching Danville, seeing what has happened in the tobacco district, the river district, downtown and all of that. Our future is bright. The other issue that disturbed me, though, and I want to make the citizens of Danville aware of that, that one of the workshops, there was a projection that by 2025, Danville would not grow at all. I just don't believe that at all. I think that we have turned the corner. We're moving forward. We need a few more hits of industry, the megapark and all of that. I don't think it was calculated in their projection of the possibility. We must continue moving forward. We must enhance and engage with our young people, make sure that you understand what is happening in our community. And the other issue is, there was a projection by 2025 that we will have an increase of 32% of senior citizens within the city of Danville. And I think that's good, that people are staying in our city. But also, we want to make sure that our young people stay. We want to pursue industry and making sure that we can be business friendly, that our community can move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilstrap?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I want to again welcome Dr. Stan Jones here. I don't know if many of you all have had the opportunity to notice, but it's been posted and the press have stated that our graduation rates are up in Danville, Virginia. That's huge, very huge. As Councilman Campbell stated, some good things are happening. Just want to remind everybody, please, please, just a few months ago, I lost my sister to breast cancer. Please, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, please do what you have to do to get yourself checked for breast cancer. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, we are invited to a lot of places. And this past Sunday, we've been invited to several churches as a council. This past Sunday, I was invited to Abundant Life, Pastor Bill and Sharon Motley for their 25th year anniversary, and to see the dome that the church family is going to be building up on 58 to seat 5,000 people. Just want to thank Pastor Bill and Sharon Motley for the hospitality of the church family. I'm just excited about what's happening in Danville. I'm excited about what's happening in Danville Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
I also welcome Dr. Jones here. It's so important that the City Council and the school board and superintendent work together. That's the future of Danville. Back to the VML, I agree with Reverend Campbell. It's amazing the things we heard. We heard things cities were bragging about. They had, you could pick up the phone and dial a bus, a dial-a-ride to take senior citizens to appointments and, you know, just for a minimal fee. We already have that. They talked about police departments getting body cameras. Roanoke was bragging on that. They were trying to get money to do that. We already have that. Talked about, we took a tour, several of us downtown, downtown Roanoke, and watched how they revitalized the downtown. We're doing many of the same things they are. Their advantage is, they've got a lot more big spenders up there. But the amazing thing is, people from Richmond and Raleigh are investing in Danville. So they see what we're doing is the right thing. So there's a lot of optimistic things there from the Virginia Municipal League. And we picked up a lot of tips from other places that think we could be doing better. So I think it was a very beneficial conference. And then finally, the River District Festival. It's River District Festival time next weekend. So be there or be square. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes, Mr. Edwards, thank you very much for your service, we appreciate it. Dr. Jones, always good to see you. Lynette, thank you for coming and bringing the leadership Southside class. I've been through that, I can't say how many years ago, but it was one of the greatest things, I still got friends today from that class, so welcome. I'd also like to just mention, this past week has been a, has been a really tough week on a lot of people through deaths, and some people that I've been knowing a long time and value, lost sons, young sons in their thirties. Tommy and Kathy Grogan, and Billy and Laura Tola. We, we are, we're thinking about y'all, and just, just a tough week. I think I went to seven funerals in six days. It's just been a tough week of, of good people that, that have left us, and just, we're keeping them in our prayers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanks.
Yes, I have a couple of things. Dr. Jones, again, I too would like to thank you for being here, I appreciate the positive attitude that seems to be running around our school system, and I think you've brought a lot of that with you. So thank you for, and thank you for being here. Leadership Southside, I too, like Mr. Rowley, went through the program. It's a, quite a team-building program, and it's, it's something that you will appreciate the rest of your life. We appreciate you being here, Lynette, it was great seeing you again, and the Chamber of Commerce does a wonderful job with that program. Mayor, I've been thinking of you a lot lately, so much so I had to compose a little poem for you. It may not sound original, but I assure you it is. "Oh Romo, oh Romo, wherefore art thou Romo? Deny thy collarbone and refuse thy gain? Or if thou wilt, be but sworn, my mayor, and the cowboys will go kaput." Original. Thank you.
Original.
And finally, I, I noticed we have a cancer awareness thing on our desk, I'm not sure where it came from, but I appreciate it. Along those same lines and along the lines of football, the Danville Cancer Association will be having a benefit provided for them at Dan Daniel Park next Friday evening. More than 80 Galileo students have signed up to play Powder Puff Football or to serve on the pep squad. So the Galileo High School's annual Powder Puff Football Game will be Friday, October 16th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at Dan Daniel Park. All proceeds will go to the, from admission and concessions, will go to the Danville Cancer Association, which Galileo last year was able to raise $300 through this event, and hopefully they intend to raise more. And I might add, the Danville Cancer Association provides 100% of its services to local patients in Danville and Pennsylvania County. I was on their website this afternoon, actually, I guess it was their Facebook site, and I noticed there's several events going on, even I think maybe one tomorrow night, but that's a good website and a good local charity that's been, been helped out. So I encourage everyone to consider going out to see the Powder Puff Football Game at Dan Daniel Park next Friday evening, between 5:30 and 6:30. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Shanks, and I am very humbled to say to you that vengeance is mine, thus says the Lord of Hosts. I will repay. And I like to remind you, sir, and I love you born, and I have a haiku for you, okay, another, another, another time. But I will say that, you know, cheese is good in scrambled eggs. It's good to be grilled, and most especially, cheese is best on toast. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Vogler.
I really can't say too much about NFL football. My team fired our coach this week, so, but I did notice the mayor was unusually a little downtrodden Monday morning when I saw him. But they might bounce back this week, I'm pulling for them. VML was great, as has been mentioned, you know, it was neat to, as always, to get new ideas and to see what other places are doing and succeeding with, and how we may apply that here, but it was also good to hear a lot of what they were saying, places were starting to do or wanted to do, we're already doing it. And actually, a couple of different cities said that they were looking at our River District as a model for what they want to do with their downtown, because it has been so successful, and we actually won the VML award last year for it. So that, it's always a, a good, a good chance to get up there and learn new things and to network with other localities across the Commonwealth. The governor was there, some of us had a chance to, to speak with him for a little bit, and some of us also went over to the General Assembly, we were pulling double duty up there, the mayor and myself and Councilman Buckner went over to the General Assembly, they were having a discussion on land banks, which is something that those who follow know that, that I've been involved with for about a year now, and I want to thank Delegate Marshall for his work and, and bringing that to the General Assembly, which will be something that if passed would be very beneficial to Danville. And then also, in regards to the reimbursement program, I know we're going to be discussing later tonight, I did just want to clarify that some of us up here were not on council and that was gotten rid of, so when you say y'all got rid of it, some of us weren't here. I support the program, I'm glad we're having a discussion on it again, about possibly bringing it back or modifying it or what we're going to do, but I think it's, it's definitely something we needed to discuss and figure out a way to make it work now for what we're doing. And lastly, we're also going to have a discussion on the parks and rec fees, and I know an issue that a lot of people had brought up to us, Councilman Buckner and I did a, did a town hall type event at the Westover Library back in the spring, and a lot of citizens had brought up the, the $50 library fee that was being charged and wanting to see that go away, and, and I know Bruce Hedrick did a great job in bringing that back up again and, and kind of bringing it to the forefront, and so I'm glad council apparently is going to be getting rid of that tonight, as I brought up in our last council meeting in the work session, to have that eliminated. And I believe that's going to be formalized tonight if I'm not mistaken, so we talk about regional cooperation, we talk about the city and the county working together and, and, you know, wanting to put a regional front forward, and so I think it only makes sense that we treat people equally and not have a, an extra fee for county citizens that city citizens are not paying. So I think this is a good step in that direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Saunders.
I'd like to ask, Ms. Lynette Lawson, if you and your class would stand to be recognized as well, we have already expressed our thanks to you, and we thank you so much for coming. Yes. And while you're standing, you've already heard that some of people in your class are sitting around the day is here, one day you may be as well, or in Richmond, or in Washington, or somewhere in New York United Nation, or anywhere in the world. So congratulations, and we wish you well. Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Also, I want to say a special thank you to all of our city employees, all 1,100-plus, for your emergency preparedness of last weekend. We had some pretty dire projections that changed in the last minute, but you were on call and you were ready. And so we say to all city employees, those on the front line, those giving support services, all the 1,100, those on standby, thank you. Drove around the city, things look well, we all hope for the best and the best, and we were not affected as much as some people were. So thank you to our city employees for, for what you do. Let me also ask Mr. Larkin if you, we did this week, but if you would remind VML that Vice Mayor Miller formally invited the statewide conference to Danville a few years ago, and we have not heard from them in terms of scheduling to come to Danville, and most of us have attended all the VML meetings in the last, I would say, eight to 10 years. And I'll be honest with you, especially this last VML meeting, Richmond had nothing on Danville. Richmond didn't even have as much as Danville has. So I think with all due respect to our state capital, but I think that we have a much more attractive city, much more to offer, and we would like to show it to other peoples in our state, so they are more than welcome to, to come to Danville. And I say to Mr. Shanks, you got jokes, man. Be in the journal.